For Charlie Hale, now the Church of Nazarene, and they'll be followed by Pledge of Allegiance by Kirk.
Would you like to join me in prayer, please? Our Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this beautiful place that we get to call home. We give a prayer of thanks for those who work so hard to serve this community, our first responders, on seeing the news around our nation, and remember to pray to them. And thank you, for their keeping us safe, for they're putting their life on the line for us. Lord, we pray that your presence would be with us in this meeting, and a moment in the pledge, we say, "Under God," meaning that you care so much about us that you watch over all that we do. May you be honored in our words and in our attitudes this night, in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Kirk.
Please. No, he's not. Is he off his?
Okay, we'll go under Agenda Item Number Four, Roll Call. Diane.
Mayor Skug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall is absent this evening. Councilmember Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Next is comments, communications. Council have any comments or communications? There being none, we'll move on to Number Six. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council, and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, an item that will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. This includes the approval of the November 12th work-study and the November 19th council meeting minutes, approving accounts payable, approving Resolution Number 1940, adopting an updated guideline, and authorizing submission of an application for state housing funds. D is approving a reversionary plat, RP 115-005, to combine lots 3757 and 3758, Prescott Valley, Unit 12, into lot 3758R, located at the intersection of Christine Drive and Summer Drive. And E is approving the reversionary plat, RP 15-006, to combine lots 4868 and 4869, Prescott Valley, Unit 18, into lots 4868R, located on South Side of Thrush Lane, approximately 200 feet west of Brooklyn Drive. Anybody want to pull an item, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda by electronic vote.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote there? I haven't got a vote up here, so I can't.
It's not a verbal.
A verbal will be yes.
Thank you.
That passes, I take it?
Yes, it does, Mayor.
Okay. Now we'll move on to new business for comment, review, or possible action. I wonder if Council would approve if we moved Number I up to begin to first. I believe Bill, Neil, did you have someone special to? Okay, we'll move Number I up, and that's a consideration of awarding a construction contract to Ventura Pacific Development in an amount of $266,296, and approve a budget transfer as outlined in the fiscal analysis for the treatment plant, equipment, storage building. Now, what I understand is you have someone here that wants to get to Phoenix real quick.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor, and good evening. What you have before you is the award of a contract with Ventura Pacific Development, Inc., for the storage building at the wastewater treatment plant, and we received bids a week and a half ago, and we had actually six bids ranging from about $266,000 up to $306,000, and Ventura Pacific was the low bidder at $266,296. And we have two representatives here tonight from Ventura Pacific, and that is Jerry Reichenberger, who is the project manager, and Tammy Sloan, the business development director. And so if you would like to have them come up and have them introduce themselves and their company to you, I'm sure they would love to do that.
Do it.
All right.
My name is Jerry Reichenberger. I'm the project manager with Ventura Pacific Development, also known as VPD Construction Group, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you and just put a name with a face. You know, we've never worked with the town of Prescott Valley before, and I just, I wanted to, you know, to introduce ourselves. We're a small company, and our home base is out of Tucson. I'm out of the Phoenix office. We also have an office in Denver, Colorado. But I will be the one who will be the project manager on this project. And our company was started in 2008 by Doug Perry, and from day one, his goal has been to develop strong relationships with our clients, and that's one reason that he has me, or sent me here, is so I can meet everyone, or everyone can meet me, so we're not just, you know, paperwork back and forth. And we have a longstanding with a lot of distinguished clients throughout the years, and just some of them are MBK Properties with assisted living, and we have projects in Tuscany at McCormick Ranch in Scottsdale, Arizona, La Choya in Tucson, Arizona, and Palisades in Denver, Colorado. We've done work with AMC Theaters via Load King and through theater renovations and upgrades, Westgate 20 in Glendale, Arrowhead 14 in Peoria, and Victoria Gardens in Rancho Cucamonga, California. We've done multiple fuel sites with Kroger or Fry's Fuel in Tempe, Arizona, Peoria, Arizona, Glendale, Arizona, and Yuma, Arizona. We've also done medical facilities, Camp Lowell Surgery Center in Tucson, and on our municipal side, we've worked with the city of Glendale on their public safety building, and FedEx Ground Systems also in Tucson. And I'd just like to say that we'd hope to add, have the opportunity to add to our list of this, the town of Prescott Valley. And once again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity.
Questions, anyone? Laura? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How long is it going to take you to put that building up? I know what your timeframe is in the contract documents, and I suspect you're going to do it much quicker than that.
Well, right now, we're scheduled for 12 weeks, and essentially, the longest lead time, of course, is getting the building. You know, meanwhile, I put together just a quick little timeline here, and we should have the shop drawings back within two to three weeks, and then after the shop drawings are released, we should have the building in four to six weeks. With the holidays coming, I'm going to honestly say to all of you, it's going to be six weeks. You know, so I don't think we're going to push that up there. But I don't see it going over 12 weeks, anything close to it. Yeah, because meanwhile, while we're waiting for the building, we'll, of course, be doing all the dirt work, utilities, everything else. And then, once the shop drawings are released, we'll be able to place the anchor bolts and, you know, put down all the concrete and everything, just waiting for the building to show up. And the building will take roughly, I would say, seven to 10 days to erect, once it's there. And then, we probably have a couple of weeks after that for finishes. Doors, there's some interior work that's done. The electrical's very minimal. It'll go fast.
Any other questions? Laura?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you and your company for coming here personally. I really like that. I don't like trading papers.
Well, thank you.
I can't look at a paper's face and form much of an opinion, so I think you've gone out of your way, and it's very much appreciated, and welcome to a little slice of paradise.
Well, actually, I have a place up in this area. I have a, up near Government Canyon. We've had a cabin there for almost 12 years now, and we just love it. Yeah, but not this time of year, sorry.
Other questions?
Fair enough.
Rick?
No.
You ready for a motion?
I think we are. If you have no more questions.
I have one more comment, real quick, if you don't mind. Just wanted to make note that there is a budget transfer as part of this action item as well, so that we can cover the full cost of the project and get it completed, so.
Any other comments? We're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve award of a construction contract to the loss responsible bidder, Ventura Pacific Development, Inc., in an amount of $266,296, and approve the budget transfer as outlined in the fiscal analysis by electronic vote.
May I ask second that?
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Who did the second? It's not showing over here.
Mary. Mallory.
Thank you, Mary.
What?
That's unanimous.
Okay, great. That means you can go to work, Neil. Put your contractor to work.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to Number Seven. A, consideration of approving Bill Dodge to the library board. Rick, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. One position on the library board of trustees became open when Donna Morgan completed her second and final term on June 30th, 2014. Donna Morgan was first appointed to the municipal, women.
That's wrong.
Wrong, yeah. To the library board of trustees. That's what I get for just reading it.
I forgot to warn you.
So paying attention. On August 14th, 2008, to fill a full term, and then reappointed to a second term consecutively with the renewal date of June 30th, 2014. Vacancy was advertised, and two applications were received. Myself, councilmembers Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye conducted the interviews, and are recommending the appointment of Bill Dodge to fill the vacancy made by Donna Morgan's departure with the term renewal date of June 30th, 2017. Yes, he is. Bill, could you come up?
Would you come up and introduce yourself?
Get right at the mic.
Can you just pull it a little bit? There you go.
Thank you very much for considering my application for the library board of trustees. Being a lifelong educator of 40 years or more, also having been a librarian, I've always had a passion for both libraries and for volunteering. I've lived in three different states, several places in each of those states, and one of the things my wife and I always do upon entering a new town is check out the library. Having done that here, our first trip to Prescott Valley, we were very impressed. We, as a result of circumstances, ended up going to California for a short period of time, and when we came back, we found that there was a new library here, and we're even more impressed with both the facilities and the expansion of the program. When I became aware that there was a position available on the board of trustees, I was very happy to say, "I'd like to look into that," and hence, I am here, and I'm looking very much forward to volunteering, that hopefully, we'll be able to help the board and help the library achieve to meet the mission and the goals that support that mission.
We have very impressive. Thank you for your consideration. Very impressive credentials for this. I'm sorry? Yeah, very impressive. Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments, Laura?
Well, once again, we're more than fortunate, as the mayor said, very impressive credentials, and I didn't even have to twist your arm. You were so willing to come and serve this community, which I deeply appreciate, as I know all the rest of the members here do.
Mary, any comments?
I just want to welcome you again, and the library board is really an amazing board, and they've got some great people on that board, so I know it's going to just go just full force. I thank you so much.
Okay, and thank you. Good. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I have just one comment. To give you an idea of how willing Bill and his wife Barb are to volunteer for service to the community, they've both recently joined the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club as well, so.
Yes.
And we're hoping that Barb will consider an appointment on one of our other commissions as well, but I know she's giving that considerable thought, so.
Good. Any other questions, comments, motions, commotions, promotions, demotions, anyone?
Mary's working on it.
We're going to, okay.
Let's see. A motion to appoint Bill Dodge to the library board of trustees to a term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2017, by electronic vote.
Okay, motion second, anyone?
I'll second.
With a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Now we'll find out if it's, good, thank you.
I don't have anything moving.
And that works. Mine didn't show that count, but.
Yeah, everybody's.
Okay.
There it is.
Oh, there it is. Okay, good. So that's unanimous, then, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you.
You are appointed. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, we move on to B, consideration of appointing Richard Lighthead to the Building Board of Appeals. Again, Vice Mayor, any comments?
Yes, I do. Just one moment. One position on the Building Board of Appeals became open when Nicole Russell resigned effective September 5th, 2015, at the completion of the term. Nicole Russell was first appointed to the Building Board of Appeals on February 27th, 2014, to fill a partial term with the renewal date of September 5th, 2015. The vacancy was advertised, and one application was received. Myself, councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory conducted the interviews and are recommending appointment of Richard Lighthead to fill the vacancy made by Nicole Russell's departure with the term renewal date of September 5th, 2017.
Good. Mary or Laura, any comments?
I would like Richard to tell your story. But, go ahead. You know what I'm referring to, right?
Yeah. I've been in Prescott Valley, lived in Prescott Valley since 1974. I moved my family here in '74, and I've got, actually, my second generation of, our family has graduated from Bradshaw High School, and I have several more coming up. I have 13 grandchildren that live here, and it's been a pleasure to be in Prescott Valley. I think I've been here fighting with Larry since whenever was, and I enjoyed my previous stint for eight years on the board. I took a job that had me out of town too much, and I just thought it was unfair to not relinquish the position at that time, and I'm back now. I'm basically semi-retired at this time, whatever that means. Seems like my phone rings about every 15 minutes with somebody wanting something, so it's kind of worse. But we've been here in town, living in the same house since forever, and.
Since dirt roads, right?
Oh, way before dirt roads. They were still clay roads when I moved in. They were somebody's dream of a road at the time. In fact, it's kind of funny, but I live right where Cedar Springs dumps into Starlight Drive, and the reason I took that lot was because Cedar Springs was actually paved by the county prior to my, so I just had to cross the road to get to my driveway. But it's, I've worked for, in construction since 1964. When I graduated high school, I started my apprenticeship the following day, and I have been continuously involved in construction. Built a lot of houses, a lot of buildings, a lot of stuff in Prescott Valley, and in Prescott, and you have by county. So I'm familiar with many of the people that are involved, and many of the issues that are involved, and to be honest with you, this is just a quiet little commission that we're on, and we don't really have much that comes up, but it's an involvement.
Well, it's crucial when we do need you, and after listening to him, I think it's very obvious why we hope that you will all unanimously vote to bring him back on, and we so appreciate your willingness, that that's what makes our town so incredibly successful, citizens like yourself.
Well, I appreciate you guys and your willingness to serve as well. The leadership is here. You know, we look at some of the other towns in the area, and they're struggling, and they're really having problems, and it's obvious that we're not doing that, and so it's a pleasure to live here.
Well, it's people like you that help straighten Larry out, and we appreciate that.
If that's the task, I'm not up to it.
There you go, any comments?
Just said, appreciate Richard serving, and the fact that he's lived in Prescott Valley for so many years and has seen so much happen, just to me speaks volume, that your experience, just from life itself, will give such a great input on the board, if it's needed. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Any other comments, questions, motions? Okay.
Motion to approve Richard Lighthead to the Building Board of Appeals to a term with the renewal date of September 5th, 2017, and again, a most humble thank you.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? Another big test.
And that is unanimous.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Okay, we move on to Number Three. It's a public hearing. General Plan Amendment, GPA 15-004, Public Works. Carmen, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you, Carmen.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to give a description this evening for this item, and then the subsequent three items after that, because they're all related. It came to staff's attention a few months ago that our public works yard, which is on the screen there for your view, was not zoned public land, which is the proper zoning district for all public facilities, parks, maintenance facilities, government facilities, et cetera. And we had an inquiry regarding possible telecommunications siting, and so it came to our attention, and therefore, we're taking the, making the requests of the council for a general plan amendment to change the district from industrial to public quasi-public on the public works yard. It's located north of Long Mesa and south of Laredo Drive. This action is recommended in order to be consistent with other publicly owned properties in the town. It's the proper land use designation for the public lands zoning district. It allows, again, like I said, for the government facilities. A neighborhood meeting was held in August at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of GPA 15004 to the Town Council. So this item relates, again, or my description relates to the subsequent items, so I'll be more than happy to provide any more description or answer any questions relating to this item and the following.
Laura, you got a question?
No, I just, it just is more a housekeeping and having a.
Exactly.
Adequate, proper zoning, so we've been doing a lot of housekeeping the last few months.
And that is exactly true, that this is housekeeping, because the present use is an industrial use, it's zoned for that, so there isn't anything untowards going on. This is just bringing it up to the town standard, making it public lands.
That's correct.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Mary?
No.
No motions?
Michael.
I guess it is a public hearing, I'm sorry, we won't need. No, anyone from the public here to comment? I don't think we have too many.
There's many chairs are going to come up and talk.
Mike has something to say? No? Okay, if there's no further comment or question, then I would declare the public hearing closed. We move on to D, consideration of approving Resolution Number 1941, adopting a minor amendment to Prescott Valley General Plan 2025. And I think we just studied that one, so. Motion, Laura?
I don't have the motion option here, so somebody else is going to have to.
No motion is coming up on the bottom of the screen.
Yeah.
I can't get that thing to move.
If you got it, Michael, go for it.
Well, I'll just read from our information sheet. I'll make a motion to approve, I can't even say that word.
Authorized.
Revolutionary plat, RP 15-005. Is it a revolutionary thing? I don't know.
It's a reversionary.
Reversionary. I like that better.
That's not what it says.
Oh, it's not it?
Revolutionary on this.
Okay.
I don't know what he read.
Let me try it again.
Okay.
It's not a reversionary or revolutionary plat.
No, it's a minor amendment.
Yeah, how about motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 1940, adopting the updated guidelines and authorizing submission of an application for state housing funds. Wrong one, okay.
There we go. I'll second that.
How many do we got left?
Okay, with a motion and a second.
I seconded it, Mayor.
Seconded it? Okay.
He didn't do it.
You got to redo it, or what?
Yes.
Do you want to read it off my paper there, Mike?
I'll try this one. Motion to prove, well, no, that's the one I have. I read before.
Should be on D.
Would you like me to read it?
Go ahead, read it.
I'll read it for Michael. Okay, motion to authorize the mayor, in his absence, the vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 1941, adopting a minor amendment to the Prescott Valley General Plan 2025, GPA 15-004, by electronic vote.
Okay, with a motion.
Anybody's vote.
Laura, you got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, can you set the vote, Diane?
Guinness, our technology is fighting us.
We'll fight back.
We'll fight back.
That passes, thank you. And Carmen, good job. Okay, move on to D, E, public hearing zoning map change, ZMC 15-003, Public Works Yard.
Yes, and this is also related, the description that I gave previously pertains to this item as well, and it's just according to state law, your general plan and zoning designations need to correlate, so therefore, these two actions are required in order to proceed with the zoning.
Okay. Anyone else got any questions? Any questions?
Not straightforward.
If there's no more questions or comments, we move on to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It might be useful just to mention that one of the reasons why they need to do this is that all of the public lands designated areas are susceptible to a lease agreement for telecommunications facilities, and we need to have as many options for those as we can, and so that's one of the things... One of the reasons why this property needs, like other government properties, to be designated PL.
Okay, thank you, Ivan. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we move on to number E.
F.
F, I'm sorry. Consideration of approving the reading of ordinance number 812 by title only for two separate occasions, then place same on final passage, approving ZMC 15003. And there, we need a motion to read ordinance by title only.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to read ordinance number 812 by title only on two separate occasions, and place the same on final passage by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? And that passes, thank you, Carmen, and we're... That's okay there. Okay, we're going to E. I'm G, I'm sorry. Consideration of... Yes, I'm sorry.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, read your ordinance, I'm sorry. We're going a little ahead of you.
Ordinance number 812, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, Municipal Corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map by changing the zoning classification of approximately four and eight tenths acres located east of Robert Road, north of Long Mesa Drive, and south of Laredo Drive from PM, Performance Manufacturing Zoning, to PL, Public Land Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Okay. Now I can go on to number G, consideration of approving and ratifying revisions to Arizona Municipal Property Corporation laws. And that one, I think you got Larry, huh?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the item that you have before you is similar to what you just went through. This is housekeeping. We had our annual MPC board meeting about three weeks ago, and the board went through these modifications, which quite frankly, haven't... The MPC board language and document hasn't been touched in at least fifteen years, and it was time to make some updates on that, and so that's all you've got. Substantively, there really isn't any change in the way the MPC is going to be doing any business. This is just to bring us up current.
Arby?
Yeah, Laura?
For the public, the changes are inserting a date and the terms, him or her. It's that simple. Just so our public understands, we should always be clear about what the changes are.
Real complicated. Okay, any questions, comments?
Down here, we can make a motion again, Diane.
There's no motion box on the bottom. Now it is.
Oh, there it goes.
You're rushing it.
All right. Are we ready for a motion? I'll make it.
I think we're ready.
Consideration of approving, ratifying revisions to the municipal property corporation bylaws by electronic vote.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
With a motion and a second, would you set the vote? There we go. That passes. Okay, we go on to H, consideration of approving the purchase of a playground equipment via Dave Bang and Associates Play World in the amount of $24,434.17. Brian?
Yes, Mayor. Back in May of this year, the Parks and Recreation Commission met with the neighborhood, received a lot of fabulous feedback in regards to amenities that they were looking for in establishing a playground at Antelope Park. This would be the last component in, if you would call a revitalization of that park in that area. I know you're quite familiar with a number of the different elements that have gone into that project there, and so we are looking at the playground. We had a number of different applicants with a variety of different options and their proposals. Parks and Recreation Commission went through an analysis of a number of those different entries, and they have recommended Dave Bang and Option 1 with their Eagle Summit Playground variety. I know in your RFC action, there is an illustration of what that playground will develop, and staff is ready to move that forward. If you find it viable, we will remove the existing playground equipment and have that site prepared for receiving the equipment, then come back in, add additional material there for safety surfacing, and be able to open that playground soon, preferably this early spring, to the public at that point in time.
Good. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I'm just so excited about how the Parks and Rec Department's going and how we're getting so much done. Brian, just thank you so much, you and your staff, and just, you know, you're doing your due diligence. I know the community really appreciates it, and the kids are just gonna love all this, so I really like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and especially the donor group that was behind this particular project, North Central University, being able to help make this a reality for us, so we're very thankful for that, as well as the vendors themselves. Back in, well, whenever that timeframe was, and some work that had to be done, these folks really came to the table, found grants, discounts, all kinds of great things, so it makes the project whole now.
Great.
Other question, Laura?
I just wanted to say, I can't wait to go watch the kids on the climbing wall. That really captured, because I've got all these great-grandkids that will absolutely love that.
Definitely. Well, I will warn you, though. Councilmember Mallory and the last playground, and boy, she had... She was kinda pushing them off to the side so she could go down the slide, so...
Terrible.
Did she really? She did.
I did not do that.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question, and that was... What is the surface that shows here, and I'm not sure if that's...
This is termed as engineered wood fiber. This is one of the recommended products that are used for safety surfacing and is rated for certain fall height requirements.
So is that loose, or is it...
Yes, it is. You'll find it as the main surfacing at the large majority of our playgrounds.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Comments, motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to make a motion. I think I'm on the right page here. Motion to approve the purchase of the playground equipment via Dave Bang and Associates Incorporated Play World in the amount of $24,443, and can't forget the seventeen cents.
Or thirty-four, seventeen, no. Second, anyone?
Mayor, I'll second it.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? One thing about this system, it's real fast.
Thumbs up, all the way around.
Let's hope.
Okay.
We're done.
Well, mine didn't even call for a vote, so I don't know. It should be six, zero.
Okay, Mayor.
Didn't come up on my...
I'll make it reflect that.
It's what?
I'll make it reflect that.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, move on to number eight, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public, those who are issued to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes, and this additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any comments? Mike, Kirk? No comments? We have one more item to cover, that's number nine, adjournment. We need a motion for that now.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, to adjourn.
Okay, with a motion, a second, anyone?
I'll second.
With a motion and a second, would you set the vote? It's what? Okay, that passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.